Good morning, everyone, and welcome back from the, uh, from the holiday weekend. Hope everyone enjoyed, had a head of a safe weekend and a happy one. Uh, again, we are here today for the Jackson County Board of Supervising meeting for Tuesday, May twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-four. With me today, Don Schlinker.
Morning.
Nan Flagle.
Morning.
Myself, Mike Stein, is our county supervisors, Lisa Smith, our county auditor.
Good morning.
Uh, Bjorn, uh, R I T Director, Luanne, our executive assistant. Uh, Mary is here for the newspaper, and first on our agenda this morning is, uh, Mr. Todd, actually, Todd's sitting in the background. We have Mr. Jayden Sackoff, uh, up here, Assistant Engineer. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, first on the agenda is a used end loader purchase, so, um, there's been stab or. A tally we have put together of few loaders, used loaders that are available. This would be to replace our Baldwin end loader. It was originally at our Bellevue shop, uh, got moved to Baldwin a few years ago to extend the life of that loader, because they put less hours on it at Baldwin, because. Um, Bellevue has more tree removal activities and what have you, all stuff like that. So moved it over there for less hours to limp it along, but, uh, it's coming up on some need of some costly repairs. Uh, the torque converter is going out, which is causing the transmission to heat up, and also along with that, the input on the torque converter is leaking, so. Um, you know, to fix all that, you're looking at, for the mechanical, twenty thousand dollars to fix, uh. Ten years ago, the transmission also had some repairs done to it to limp it along, so, um, it's basically in need of a total rebuild at this point. Uh, we have some of our fiscal year twenty-four larger equipment purchases that were planned for this year got pushed back due to, uh. Delays, so I guess there'd be money available for this, and it's either that or we put a lot of money into it to repair. Um, we got a crisis from, uh, Titan Machinery, Housby, and Alltorfers, and they all gave values also to trade in the one that are problem loader. Uh, lowest one, lowest cost one would be from Titan Machinery, it's a case loader, yeah. The amount after we take, after they take in trade would be seventy-eight thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars and sixteen cents. So.
What are we trading in, Jayden?
Uh, case, another case loader, six-two-one B.
Do we have cats?
Hmm, I don't think we have cats, we have case, um. What ones do we have? We have a deer. Oh, what other bids you got there? Oh, what are the bids? Gotcha. Case, a couple of Volvos from Housby, and a cat from Alltorfers.
And a large amount of difference in value or a large amount of difference in price?
Um. Depends, like between the cat, yes, there is, there is twenty-five thousand dollar difference between the case and the cat. Uh, same with one of the Volvos, uh, the other Volvo that's listed is only a couple thousand more, but, uh, likely due to hours. Wasn't the case the, by far, the lowest hour machine, too? Yes.
Okay, and yours and the mechanic's recommendations for the case?
Yes.
You have money?
Yeah.
So is it the supply chain that is not doing, fulfilling which, what else do we have bid for this year? Oh, there was not gonna get.
The sign, so we're getting a new sign truck, and, uh, either the body or the chassis will, uh. Build out, it takes time for that, so that was our largely one, it's more of a specialty build, too, you know, it's not just.
Mm-hmm.
It's, uh, unique, I guess.
But there wasn't any other large equipment that weren't not getting greater or a truck or no truck or something? So you do have the funds available in the budget.
Correct.
And that will happen before June?
Yeah. Yeah, so assuming now, or depending on what the outcome is, uh, our Sean would go down and inspect it. After a decision today and make sure, uh, what it's cracked up to be, or what they all have advertised as.
Coming with us.
Well, I believe it was as is, I don't think, I didn't check with Sean, I don't, do you remember, Todd?
I think there is, I'm, I'm sure it's only like three months or three hours.
Just to make sure once we.
So I guess, yeah, I mean, the week after we get it, I would hope that, it's a dealer anyway, so it's not like a private situation where we, she would hope the dealer would stand by and come up.
Cause they're moving it to Davenport, right, for us to come look at.
Yes, it's in Des Moines right now.
We had a sign of, whatever you wanna call it, uh.
In the ten?
Yeah, yeah, ten thing, and as part of that agreement, they agreed to move it up to, otherwise we would have sent somebody to Des Moines to look at it.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the, uh, end loader purchase as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried.
Next is, uh, discussion on two hundred and sixty-seventh Street, uh, Level C portion of roadway, so, uh. Supervisor Flagle and myself went out there, uh, was that Wednesday of last week, and met with Jamie McHugh on our, what it would take to upgrade. That portion of roadway from Level C to Level A, explained the call for replacement, uh, he had some other questions about the grading, uh, fence removal, I discussed all that. Um, had good discussion, came back and had an email from them stating that they want to, they do wanna continue pursuing upgrading the stretch of Level C. To Level A, and they would be willing, or per our policy, you know, write a check for the fifty percent of the seventy-five percent cost share upfront as a down payment, if you will. So, uh, I told them, well, we gotta bring it forward to you guys first to see what your guys' thoughts are, like, concerns, uh. At the comments estimate somewhere, you know, cost estimate, again, this is just an estimate, um, was to upgrade that portion, it's probably, it's around three hundred and seventy feet worth of roadway. Be, we're looking at twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, to improve it, so they would be responsible for seventy-five percent of that. County, our department would be responsible for twenty-five, the remaining twenty-five percent. We ourselves would do the work to improve it.
So that cost includes basically our time and material, and I, so basically, yeah, okay, so basically, it's not.
Yeah, and again, so the estimate, if the cost were to come in lower, well, their cost would be shared accordingly, you know, on, on the flip side, that too, if it costs more, well.
Again, we wanna make sure that everybody knows this is on a case-by-case basis when this comes up, and upon inspection, when I was out there, it appears. For our maintainer and our equipment to go down to that, that it needs to go that far anyway to turn around. So it's logical that, you know, if we decide to go move forward with seventy-five percent of their cost, there, there's a couple different factors lying into it.
Yeah, and this estimate does include rocking that field entrance that you're mentioning about where the greater turnaround, it includes rocking that entrance as well, because right now it's just dirt, so.
Yeah.
Um, along with that, there would be, like I said, fence removal, though, and we'll still have to send out letters for all that work, but.
You're talking to the neighbor.
Mm-hmm. And McHugh.
Which isn't in, in the right spot anyhow, whether it's been, got done or not, that should be.
It's well within, it's not too far from the road, existing road.
Before we can take action on this, we had to move the untable, correct?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to, to untable this.
I will second that.
A motion. With, I have a motion in a second to untable the action on two hundred and sixty-seventh Street, uh, improvement. All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Do you have a timeframe?
So now the next step is we, according to this policy, we need to actually have a public hearing. And then, uh, after the open hearing, closing hearing, then you can take action to vote to, so if, if Jayden recommended, we proceed with the, uh. Reclassification to Level A, then you would take action on that, and as, on the flip side of that, uh. To comply with the Level C ordinance, we would need a, um, resolution to say, uh, you're gonna reclassify it as Level A once completion improvements have been made. So you need two things, have a hearing according to, according to the road improvement policy, and then, uh, you need to do a resolution, uh, to address the reclassification. That needs to happen as part of the Level C ordinance.
Okay, just that portion, you mean?
Reclassify the rest of the road as a Level C?
So you're just gonna remove the, the section that's Level C now that we're approving, that needs to be reclassified as Level A.
Right, but the section that was levels, the rest of it that is Level C.
Stay, we're not changing that, so the only thing you're changing is the part that has to go from C to A.
So from now, for the next step for us would be, we need to schedule a public hearing. There's the ten to twenty day notification, right, so it would be the eleventh would be the earliest we could do it?
Is it four and twenty or ten to twenty for this kind of stuff?
The earliest you could get into the paper is just Friday the thirty-first, which we need to be published then, probably, uh, yes.
Good. So we can set up public hearing for the eleventh.
Wayne, are you listening?
I'm listening, okay, and I think the eleventh is probably the earliest we can.
So in the meantime, we have to put together the easement agreement, uh, the agreement for the, the purchase, or for the, the fifty percent of the seventy-five percent. So there's things that we need to get in place.
Paperwork and whatnot.
Yeah.
What are you recommending?
As soon as we can, the eleventh, if that's when we can do it, then we should do it the eleventh.
Are you recommending approv- improvement to it?
Yeah, cause it makes sense, yeah, it's, it makes sense, and so they're willing to pay, we, you know, policy, we've never had the policy until this year, so.
We get to go ahead for the way.
So.
Is it a ten and twenty or a four and twenty? Yeah. But that's a ten and twenty, so that's.
I think, I'd have to look it up, but I think it's a four and twenty bit, if it's, if as soon as we can do it is the, the eleventh, and it's ten and twenty anyway, we'll get the notice.
Yeah. Joe, do we need any action to keep moving forward?
No.
No?
Just a motion to set a public hearing.
Right.
I would make a motion to set a public hearing for the eleventh.
Nine a.m.
Nine a.m.
I'll second that.
Well, I wanna do it right away, so I don't conflict with anything else, does that make sense? Makes sense. I have a motion in a second to set the public, with this, um, item for June eleventh at nine a.m. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And you guys will have whatever you need ready, for the resolution to move to Level C and.
Next week.
All that stuff.
Well, at, right after the hearing.
Okay.
Basically, what I was just asking is, I know we said that there might be some Level C roads or B roads that aren't.
That isn't ready yet.
But that's what I'm saying, could we make sure that this one is by?
And this one actually has an existing resolution in place stating.
That's basically what I was asking, is if we needed to extend the rest of it with the resolution.
So just, is it just a resolution that we originally had to put this into a Level C road, so we need to repeal that?
So I don't feel you have to amend, because the rest of the road.
That's what I'm saying, is it just that road on that resolution? I have to look at it.
Yeah. But like, to what Nan is saying, that we, there's a, we have quite a few sections of road that are being treated and signed as Level C or B that don't have the documentation, or, um, that.
Uh. Weren't followed through all the way.
Yeah, or that are being treated as Level B or C, but aren't really signed that way, so we, they're, we're gonna be coming back with what we call a cleanup resolution and a map to address all these other sections of road and get them up to. Like, so if they are Level B and being treated as Level B, we're gonna have a resolution that states it and have, like, terminus, like, start-stop, like, everything documented, so that's.
With appropriate sign.
Yeah, that's.
Cause there's some that are not signed.
So with this one, we are moving the gates back then to where the Level C would start.
So there are two things we're planning up, and we'll continue to, thank you very much.
It's a mess.
Great.
Next is a utility permit, um, from Interstate Power and Light, or Energy. Um, it's around the Macocada area, so it's, um, along, I don't know the exact, no name of the road, but I always refer to it as the Red Schoolhouse Road. From Highway one thirty-six to sixty-four, uh, along Highway sixty-four, along Highway sixty-two, Esgate Road, uh, Hurstville Road, they're just doing what they call. Life extension, maybe, so basically maintenance work, they're replacing insulators, bat poles, maybe some guy wires, just maintenance work on their overhead lines, so. Nothing.
She was doing it?
Uh, Alliant Energy.
Alliant, okay.
Yep. So seems, are pretty straightforward, so recommend approval, so move it.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the runaway utility permit for Alliant as presented in areas presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Uh, just wanted to give an update on reclaim. This year is the exact opposite of last year as far as moisture. More than a half a foot moisture this year, so.
You don't need a water truck, is that what you're saying?
So far, mother nature is our water. That, that is what we're running into, right, maybe not too, but delay, or it is, so it delays us from doing so, but, um. We have a spreadsheet that keeps track of all of the rock that comes in for these roads, uh. And more actively coming in today, so this spreadsheet is a snapshot of about two weeks ago, we were at almost seven miles completed, again, that was about two weeks ago. Um, just to kinda give you guys an idea of where we're at, we're shooting for about a hundred and twenty-eight miles this year, but. As with last year and with always, I guess, mother nature's gonna be the dictating thing, but, um.
Where are we at, or what's, what's completed this summer?
Most of the Macocada area is completed, they have moved over to, and some of Baldwin, some of their roads that were adjacent to the area, but, uh, they are now working in the Preston area.
Okay.
To try to focus on that side, Preston and Sterling, they kinda got shorted last year, because they were on the tail end of our reclaimers, start over there. Go from there, um. See, oh, I guess there was a small area over in the Bellevue area as well, uh, three-twentieth Street, that's south of the Gulf course, where there's an extended pier, or length of dust control, it's probably. Quarter mile or so dust control that. Did not get able to get retrieved last year, because dust control's applied, so we went ahead and did that prior to dust control applications, that way that already means got hit, but, so, but primarily the Macocada. Some of Baldwin and now in Preston.
Okay.
Uh, instruction work, too, Y sixty-one overlay work will start tomorrow for the PCC patching, they're going to do soft cutting tomorrow, so that way Thursday, they can do a bunch of tarot replacement, and that work will. Go, then a cou- or take a couple weeks, or a week and a half, but start tomorrow.
We've been doing a fair amount of patching, too, is that correct? I don't remember what road I was on, but we did a fair amount of patching, was it between Andrew and?
Yeah, E seventeen between Andrew and, uh, sixty-one, uh, E seventeen east of Andrew, working towards Spring Brook. Uh, they do something down the Cascade Road, too, but yes, they've been doing a fair amount of patching this year.
Good.
That's all I have. Yes, so we got a call from, uh, Dan Schrader last week, asking what are, he would like to start it, he's gonna let us know this week for sure, but he would like to possibly start a day labor. One of the day labor bridges that he normally does in fall, next week, uh, some of the bridges he's been working on down along the Wopsey with, uh, Rising have been flooded out, and. He doesn't wanna go start one hundred and eighty-fourth yet, because he doesn't wanna only get a quarter of the way through that and have to pick up his crew and finish bridges elsewhere, so it'd be the perfect time for him to do one day labor, so, uh. That is tentative, that may happen starting next week.
And which one is it?
Uh, he'd either do the one on two-seventy-fifth Street over by Otter Creek, or the one on two-twenty-fourth Street in the Butler area. So, and all this would be hold over eighty billion until after July one, so.
Yeah.
Just a time filler to, for his, keep his crew busy and.
Doesn't bother you, does it?
No.
I'd say, yeah, whenever he can get them done, he wants to get them done, yeah, get them done.
And this, the steel that, uh, he won the bid on, that we awarded a couple weeks ago, it's actually going to be arriving on the coat yard Thursday or Friday this week, so, a little timeout just about perfect.
I sent down a quote the other day, I thought it was kinda interesting, to remember that every bridge you cross was built by the cheapest bidder. He never responded.
Did you guys check your emails this morning?
I did, and I appreciate the reports on the, uh, work, work orders, yeah, appreciate them, very interesting to, uh, keep abreast of.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta make sure we put in the completion, or required completion dates.
Yeah, they're interesting, I thank you for that. Thanks, guys, have a good day. Are there any visitors or citizens present or online that would like to address the board today? Seeing or hearing none, we have, uh, James Crocker on the agenda, Brett, are you James, or is?
James is fine.
Okay, good morning.
You guys already have the copies, as I understand, of the contract. Um, we have two, correct? That they, we're presenting to be signed, and this again is the, uh, in order to get in compliance with the law, uh, small towns are required to either have their own law enforcement. Representation, meaning their own police department, or have an agreement with the county sheriff's office to represent them and cover their towns, uh, for law enforcement purposes, so.
And these are based on, per capita?
Yeah.
Okay, I realize that Andrew is that much larger than Thomas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so. We only have Andrew on our agenda, are we approving both of those? Did we do Monbet last time?
Yeah, it was nine my last.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion in a second to approve the twenty-eighty agreement with the city of Andrew as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
We're good.
Right, well done.
Sorry, I'm. Uh, I think you guys, uh, yeah. Okay, alright.
How was the weekend, quiet?
Oh, not too bad.
Good, yeah, yeah, hopefully everybody stayed at bay, anyway.
Mm-hmm, nothing too crazy.
Alright, alright, thanks, have a good day. Um.
Yep, sounds good.
Is Nathan in the hall, Brett?
Let me look. Not see him yet? I don't see him.
Okay. Are you available? Head this way if you would, thank you.
Just out of my curiosity, how much is that contract with Andrew gonna be?
Nine thousand five hundred.
Five hundred.
Nine thousand five hundred, is this still a twenty-five, am I right? So, if I can figure out.
Whatever you like. Well, we hope everybody had an enjoyable holiday. Spent a little time on the road.
Is it to relatives?
Yeah, my daughter lives out west of Des Moines, so. There are a couple granddaughters out there. They got some storms, water. I'm gonna take a recess, I'll be here, yeah. Well, we are joined by, we didn't try to have Becky Chapin, our, uh, human resource director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Becky.
Well, how's the schedule, are we?
Well, yeah, we were, and we just did take a recess, so we were just kinda.
Alright.
Put ourselves here a little bit.
We're settled.
Okay.
Right, I have a few things for you today, they are all personnel action, um, and the first one is that our facilities maintenance manager, Jeff Kilberg, has been with us, um, for six months as of May thirtieth. He was hired at a rate set below the salary budgeted for the position, um, and like I said, he will have successfully completed his six-month probation on the thirtieth, so I would recommend his salary be adjusted to the full salary set for the position for this fiscal year. Which is seventy thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars effective May thirtieth for the remainder of this fiscal year.
And then, is that, um, next year's salary, or will it be adjusted in July?
It'll be adjusted in July.
So he's only got under this amount, that it'll only be a month and a half, or months?
Yep.
So.
Okay.
I have a motion in second to approve the salary adjustment for maintenance supervisor as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And also in the maintenance department, Bob Kilberg, who was our maintenance custodian, has completed one full year of service on May thirtieth as well, I would recommend that his hourly rate be adjusted to twenty-five dollars effective May thirtieth for the remainder of this fiscal year as well.
So move it.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second to approve the salvi, uh, adjustment for, uh, Bobby Kilberg as presented, um, any further discussion? Also, just so that people know and note, um, we had, uh, another personnel that we did not keep on, had retired, um, and they've been doing that person's duties also. So, um, so far, from what I've heard per, from personnel and the courthouse, they both worked together very well, and, um, I think, uh, you may be here more than I do. Um, but, uh, everybody seems to think they're doing a pretty good job around here.
I agree, yeah.
So all those in favor say aye.
Right.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
In our sheriff's department in the jail, we received a resignation notice from one of our P R and jailers, Greg Crowman, so I would ask for a motion to accept the resignation of Greg Crowman effective May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Hold on.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the resignation of Greg Crowman as presented, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, motion carried.
Do we send a letter, or, or is this, he's not retiring?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, um, and Andrew has, uh, made an offer to fill that vacancy as well as the remaining PRN position vacancy that he had within the department. Um, now we ask for a motion to approve the hiring of Betsy Swisher effective May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, at an hourly rate set for the position of twenty-sixty-nine, including authorizing the county auditor to issue five weekly checks for the same.
Hold on.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the hiring, uh, of Betsy Swisher as presented, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, motion carried.
That was effective when?
Um, May twenty-third. And the other gentleman, they haven't coordinated a start date yet, but I would ask for a motion to approve hiring Ryland Richards at a start date to be determined, at an hourly rate set for the position of twenty-sixty-nine, including authorizing the county auditor to issue five weekly checks for the same.
Hold on.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the hiring of Ryan.
Ryland.
Riley. As presented, all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And last but not least, the coordinator of disability services position, with the upcoming retirement of Lynn Bopes, um, an offer has been made to fill the position. And I would ask for a motion to approve hiring Lynne Birkin effective June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, at a salary of sixty-eight thousand, set for the position through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, including authorizing the county auditor to issue five weekly checks for the same.
So move it.
I have a motion in a second to approve the hiring of Lynne Birkin, any further comments? So we went through the, uh, interview process and was very impressed with the young lady and her capabilities to fulfill that position, so, um, the interviews were, or had, and. That's what we come up with, so, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, motion carried.
Okay.
Thanks, Becky, for your extra time and effort to put into them.
Sure, thank you, I love it, thank you.
Um. Lisa?
Uh, this morning, I made a motion to approve the minutes of the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four board proceeding, as written by Auditor Smith, and authorized publication in the official newspapers, so much to this.
Second, motion second to approve the minutes of May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, written by Smith and authorized publication, all those in favor. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve an authorized chair signature on the information technology services agreement, managed services plan, document locator service plan. And the licensed code support agreement with Solutions Inc. for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. For software and hardware maintenance effective July first, twenty twenty-four for ninety thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents.
And. What was the percentage increase on that?
I don't know.
I thought I seen a number, but I don't know if I seen a percentage, but it was.
That was Shelley thing, I don't know.
But I think it was like a two thousand dollar increase or something, if I remember.
I can't.
But again, this is another basically renewal and something we need and and required and.
They are that.
Budgeted for, we're good. Shelley budgets. Motion payroll system and everything.
It's everything, it's our entire computer system here at the courthouse, we've been. Gosh, I think we started with solutions in like nineteen eighty-three, and we were fully going up in by nineteen eighty-five, so we've been with them for quite a few years.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to if uh and the chair's signature on the information technology service agreement as presented, all those favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
The last thing on my agenda is we're back talking about cybersecurity again, um. I know that you've received some emails from the insurance agent, she is unable to be with us today. Um it appears that she's not online either. Um.
Called me during our meeting, but.
Oh, okay. Um it's just you have to decide which option you want, or we can bring it back till next week if you want. But this policy, I did email somebody else on Friday, I did not receive anything back because of the holiday weekend, I'm sure. This policy does cover from May first of twenty twenty-four through March first of twenty twenty-five. Um I don't know if they've reduced the premium by those two months, or.
Can we take a short recess? We will reconvene at this time, I apologize for the inconvenience there, we were just trying to touch base with the insurance agents to answer a couple of questions, but I think we'll just make a determination here. So um could you again explain the differences, if you would?
Um.
So.
Let me see what I.
So basically, we decided to go ahead with cyber insurance with under the recommendation of our IT director. And the policy was for, I'm gonna throw some round numbers out there. Um the premium was like thirteen thousand. And it was.
Something eleven something.
So this is from Tokyo Marine, it's for a policy called Net Guard Plus Cyber Liability Insurance. Option one is for twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Option two is for eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And I believe.
Okay.
Option one has a fifteen thousand dollar deductible, option two has a thirty thousand dollar deductible. So for what?
And the period was for?
According to the, it is for May first, twenty twenty-four through uh March first, twenty twenty-five.
So. I guess this is just a suggestion, because. Uh I don't know if we had numbers from our new fiscal year, if if the numbers would be the same, I would start it on July first, the fiscal year. So our premium should be for a year then, correct?
I thought we wanted, didn't we, don't we renew in March or April first, and that's why we wanted to get it on the.
So we would have it from May to March.
But I do not think in. I was looking right that they really changed our premiums by cutting them.
It went down about a thousand bucks, because initially I thought it was thirteen thousand, like you, I think it came down.
That was my question. So if it's if it's eleven hundred dollars a month, so be it. Um and we're losing two months, that's twenty-two hundred dollars. Of insurance. So if that's correct, I mean, if that would be the motion, that that would be the premium, although. I mean, either way, we should be protected at some point.
We should be protected, I'm not necessarily in in favor of going back a whole month, because.
Re- retroactive. I I'm not.
You're paying for a month that you really didn't get protection.
I would agree, uh I mean, again, if it's a case where the start design first or June first, I I don't know if it makes a difference, but. Our premium should reflect that, if we're not paying for three months premium. March, April, April, May, yeah.
I mean, and to me, the difference, I would do the.
Just Jennifer's.
The lower deductible.
Doesn't state that, right?
Because you're not.
Jennifer's email last week.
Well, my god, just says the quarters for ten months.
She just sent one last week, but we need to make a decision on that, I don't know if it said anything regarding the premium.
What were you saying then?
I just, I don't think we should, I would be in favor of the lower deductible for a little bit less money than it, I mean. You'd be saying that if you had to make a claim.
Right.
I mean, it's gonna take you fifteen years.
And we hopefully don't have it planned, because then we gotta get doctorable.
I agree, but I'm saying.
Yes, that would be in favors approving. Talking to Jennifer and approving the fifteen thousand dollar option one, if we could get a start date of June first. Through the end of March.
Does it make any difference as far as audit wise or payment wise to you people? Is making it easier to. So if we go on a year of the contract and it starts June first and ends May thirty-first, doesn't matter.
I guess this goes with this, this could be on the same.
Cycle.
Billing cycle as all the Shelley stuff we just did, it sounds an awful lot, you know, we're just renewing a. A service agreement, yeah, most of them.
It main thing is that if you approved the insurance today, then we'll co- we'll coordinate with either Jennifer or Joe and talk about when to get it started.
And the premium.
And the premium.
Yep.
I mean, I'm not in favor of paying for a month that we've already gone through.
Right.
I think our 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 need our things should go forward.
So maybe we just need to approve.
Moving forward with setting up a.
Maybe we need to not approve this beginning, the effective date, you just approve that you're going to do it, not the effective date.
Yeah.
But the ending date, but not the beginning date.
But I remember there was some discussion, I guess there was some discussion, she didn't know if they would write a shorter term. And she checked and came back and said they would do ten months. She didn't know what that would do, if I remember that right, so.
Didn't know if it changed the premium.
Right, so whether it's ten months or a year from now, I don't care. You know, so.
So let's approve to move forward, with the with the policy that you want.
So that's what I'm hearing is the Tokyo Marine.
Yep.
Sounds like option one with a fifteen thousand dollar deductible.
Buck, okay?
Oh.
Not three times on this.
Cabinet and a hand with the doors that lifted up, he dropped those, that's what it sounds like.
About three times on. Okay, so is there a?
Do a year, do the year.
I made a motion that we proceed. And like I say, and come back for the final, do we need a final approval or just approve the amount?
We do have a couple of hoops to jump through yet, so I suspect that this will not be the last time we talk about this.
Okay, so I'm.
We're approving option one at this point, with the with the start deter- uh start and date to be determined.
Right.
Second.
A motion second to approve the uh fiber insurance uh policy to move forward with the option one. And the start stop date to be determined. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Luen?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Calendar for this week is a little bit thinner than usual. Um at eleven o'clock this morning, after a regular meeting, we'll have a work session with Josh Bolt, the Coca City manager. Um on the Jackson County Communications Board. Um seven o'clock tonight is the board of adjustment meeting in the community room or by Zoom for any of you that want to attend that.
JCA is also tonight at six.
Okay.
It was postponed last week due to the potential story.
It's a good call, it turns out. Thank you. Alright, tomorrow, Wednesday, May twenty-ninth at nine AM is an iris meeting, interview verified Zoom for NIN. Thursday, May thirtieth at eight thirty AM is an LE PPC meeting in the community room. I assume that's also you, NIN, sweet, just LE PC, so I'm not sure why the difference in the naming. Friday, May thirty-first at ten AM is a regional governing board special meeting um in Davenport for NIN. And our next regular meeting, um it's going to be a little different, um because of a conflict, it's going to be on Monday, June third. And it's going to be at eleven AM.
Get that, Barry. We don't want you to be late. Or early, yeah.
It's not, it's not eight, we could have done eight o'clock, but it's eleven o'clock, so. Okay, uh the other bit of business I have today is I I'm looking for a motion to approve the fireworks permit for Brian Peterson. Um from um Winkle, Iowa, on July the fourth. The rain date of July fifth.
So again, at this time, we're still working working on our new. Um ordinance or. If that's what we're working on for the fireworks um storage and such. Again, it's work in progress, so.
The one question I have. Is I don't have any problem with it whatsoever, except for if you look on the map provided, the shoot site is not his land.
It is not, it is George Kilberg's land.
Okay.
Which he has included a permission slip that or a letter from George Kilberg that it's all your, that's in would be in the digital copy that you got. I didn't make it on the paper copy, but he does always get written permission from the landowners, and it's across the street from his property on George Kilberg's land.
For everyone to enjoy.
Well, kill process, do you need that?
Second.
Motion second to approve the fireworks permit for Brian Peterson as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Well, I have to you.
Okay. We'll take a short recess at this time. We will reconvene at this time our meeting, and we're joined by Lori Roland, our Jackson County zoning administrator, good morning.
Hi, everyone.
And Lori is here to discuss some public action on the uh um um public hearing date for comprehensive plan.
Yeah, at our last um zoning commission meeting on Monday, the twentieth of May. The zoning commission reviewed the the draft, the final draft of the comprehensive plan. And and has recommended that the board of supervisors approve the plan. So what we now have to do is move forward with a public hearing, and I believe we have to do them as ten and ten and twenty, so no more than. Uh no less than ten days before the hearing, and no more than twenty days before the hearing that we have to have our public notices out. So I'd like to see if you guys would uh entertain setting the public hearings to review the comprehensive plan for. Public notice or public hearing and then adoption.
So we received uh the comprehensive plan, and I don't know if there's a date on this. And I've been reading through it, but there is a couple of things in there I had questions on, so do I bring them up at the public hearing? Or do you want to hear a couple of concerns now?
You can, you can, but I don't think we can really make changes to it now, I I would think we have to do them all.
Sure.
Together. So what what are your concerns, Mike?
Oh, it it not really concerns, but I mean, just a couple of things, like the the school system on page six. Um it says Bellevue Community Schools, of course, I don't think it mentions in there about the new school that's currently being being constructed.
Uh. Let me just see, but it's still part of this Bellevue schools, they're not.
No, but it says how many schools there is and what they what they are, but there's actually, by the time, there'll be another new building there.
Okay, because if we adopt this for July first.
It won't be there, you mean?
It won't be there.
Okay, so also, again, with the McCoca that's cool, being is there closing breaks, is that correct?
No, pardon.
Card, they're closing, so would that be an update for that, or would it be?
That would probably be the update when we update in five years.
And this is all, maybe.
It's fluid.
To tit for tat, but even like, you know, when it talks about the dental or the um dentist in the area, there's also offices in Bellevue and Preston and it says McCoca there.
But yeah, we need to uh, you know, did something slip by us potentially, and if you're.
Yeah, and like again, I I don't know if it's worth changing, but.
Yeah.
On the EMS uh um also on page eleven, it says that they're entirely volunteers. I don't think that's necessarily true, because I know Bellevue hired a full-time paramedic. Not gonna. And then on page fifteen, I have also, you have some entertainment, and you mentioned the.
Page, I'm sorry, sixteen?
Uh fifteen.
Okay.
You mentioned the um events, and of course, you mentioned the the rodeo, the fair, but I don't believe nothing was said about the pro rodeo, so it is a pro. I don't know if that should be mentioned.
You've been coming to.
Yeah, it is, it's quicker day, yeah.
Okay, those are things, I'll I'll reach out to Laura and see how we want to.
Yeah, just.
Uh if we want, if we can update the draft now, uh but I think we probably need to wait since the. Commission recommended that for approval, but of course, that it will be amended.
Yeah.
Okay. So uh.
So they were just, okay, again, so if you, can you amend it?
This is like, first I would add, Lisa, any advice?
Well, you haven't.
We haven't adopted, I think.
We haven't adopted.
The purpose of the public hearing.
So, but then do you have to have a new public hearing on the new, the new version if it's changing? Yeah.
That we'll do three.
Uh. Like I said.
I thought you said we had.
We're having.
You said we had.
Oh, excuse me, and this, just so you know, this is, someone sent me straight, I went to a really great meeting last week in Cedar, in Sioux, yeah, Sioux City. Uh this is not an ordinance, this is by resolution. So a comprehensive plan is not a governance, it does.
Technically, it's almost a fluid document.
It is, it is, so it is by resolution and not by uh.
Well, because there's nothing in it that's law.
Right, there's nothing in it.
It can't be an ordinance.
No, it's just information.
Right.
Resolution, because it's not law.
Right, so I don't know if we have to do the three readings or not. But it's something of ours, I would still say this, do the, you know.
I would say at least one or two public, a public hearing that will do gather any changes that we think we need to make or whatever, then we can.
Then you don't have to start back over with number one, you can just go to number two public hearing with the changes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So.
And I don't get to change it.
Alright, so the goal was to have everything done by the thirtieth of June. Uh since that's when our contract expires with ECIA. So uh if we can get the notice to the paper. For uh publication for the fifth of June. That would, we need to do ten days minimum, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So they basically take us to the eighteenth of June for a public hearing, is that what you calculated out?
Well, when we talked, we said we could, we got the paper by this Friday, the thirty-first, we could do it on June eleventh.
What, you can do it on June eleventh, okay.
We just sat one for June eleventh, so we did the same thing.
Okay, right. Okay. That doesn't give me ten days.
We thought it was four.
Well, can we do a four and?
It does for, if you get it in this Friday on the thirty-first.
Can do a four, okay.
No, it wouldn't give you ten days.
No, because you have to get it to the newspaper on the thirty-first, it's published on the.
Fifth.
Does it count to be published when they put it on their Facebook page?
I don't think the way that I have a code written that it does.
I thought they were changing, now that they made changes.
Don't think they have. Don't think it's happened.
Or on our website? What does publication include anymore, but I thought they included um social media and electronic. What does publication include anymore? But I thought they included, um, social media and electronic notification. Did that just pass this year that you could do the?
So we, regardless of minutes. In regards to minutes, the problem there is that we do have the publica, we meet the publication requirements, so we still have to publish in the paper.
The minutes.
The minutes, yeah, so I would think that everything else would be.
So notification. Doesn't matter to me.
Yes. I probably need to be eighteenth, just.
Okay, let's do the eighteen, because, um, from my understanding, it's zoning, there's a hearing for zoning does ten and twenty, ten, minimum, uh, no more than ten days away. No less than ten days, no more than twenty. So I would feel more comfortable with the eighteenth that we're.
And then you can.
Okay, so you're gonna.
Say that we're on the twenty fifth and then we can approve it that day, we done before the end of year.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's set the public hearing for the eighteenth, but then you're gonna verify whether we need to have two more public hearings before we do have enough on the public hearing, correct?
Yep, we'll do that, because it's a resolution.
Yeah, and if we make any changes, do we need to have a, a second public hearing for the changes?
If we don't ordinarily do public hearings for resolutions, not required anyway. Not, not that we can't.
So there you go. Then there's that.
But do you even need the public hearing?
Then there's that.
I would say yes.
I would say, the need is not, I don't think the need is there, I think it's more of a courtesy. Okay, these are the changes we made. We good?
Well, like I sat in on your meeting, um, it's been going on for a year, is that correct?
We started, we entered a contract with ECIA on July first of two thousand twenty.
And all we knew about it.
Of the comprehensive plan?
Well, I mean, that's what some of the comments were made, we didn't know about this.
Well, there was a wind ordinance that was part of it, so we don't want to confuse the two, but, but.
They're not gonna know about it, they're, they're not. They don't get the paper, they ain't gonna know about it either.
There wherever we can put it.
Yeah.
You don't read the paper, listen to the radio, or read the, read our website and, and look for information you're not gonna hear.
All right, um, I do want to thank you guys about the new website that's coming through. I, I think it, it puts some of this notification into the public's hand where they can check that they want to receive, you know, they want to get those blasted to them, public notices, agendas, minutes, whatever. And I think it's gonna be a really great tool and I, I'd like that you guys had the foresight to go forward with this.
Well, obviously, we had complaints on some of it and it was hard to navigate and so what you're trying to make it better.
Well, even in-house, I mean.
Right.
What we had Bjorn, because I'm trying to get service support from the, the provider was not, was not great.
Okay, so are we good?
So we have that, so also I had.
What time is the public hearing?
Uh, let's do it nine AM again.
Nine AM.
Does that work? Are everyone concerned, or would you rather do ten?
What's your agenda like? Why do you wanna?
Normally, tag, does it matter if tacos first? I mean, we could do nine thirty. Or not.
Normally, public hearings don't take long, but.
I kinda like doing public hearings at nine, because then you're not having a room full of people sit here, why if we're kind of, or somebody's not having to shut off in the middle of telling us what's going on?
Yeah, I don't think it bothers us, secondary origin, we have a few minutes. Let's do it at nine.
Nine, okay, thank you. Okay, so, uh, also just wanted to bring you guys up to date on.
Sure.
Sure, I'll, I'll.
Second.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Motion second to approve having a public hearing on the eighteenth of June at nine AM. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
Sorry, I was just trying to speed things up for you. Okay, so department update, um, we did court notices on group one. And we still have some that are still being worked through. I had, we had, we did dismiss some. Basically, the, when the notice was served by the deputy for the court notice. The property owner was in failing health and wasn't likely to be around for the court date. We dismissed that. We will be reserving that to whatever owners are in place in the next few months. If, if the violations aren't, aren't cleared up, so we did have to dismiss those. Uh, it was just, it was the right thing to do.
Logical.
It was the right thing to do. So anyway, we're, uh, in group two and group three, we did those simultaneously. We did those last week. Uh, we, we served nine court notices, uh, for group two and group three. One is gonna be a real challenge, hopefully they will follow through. And that we don't have to go through with the abatement on that particular one. I mean, there's a couple of other challenges, but anyway, so that's where we are with the nuisance violations there. Um, in Green Island, there was one that, one case that started considerably sooner than, than the others. That one's ready for court notice. So hopefully in the next week, we'll, we'll be doing there. And there was another one that was gonna be served out on E seventeen. Trolled by there yesterday and all of a sudden, there's some great improvement, so, uh, well, I'll be watching that to see how we need to move forward, um, which I did send that attorney an email last week. Uh, just trying to see if he was gonna be acted on behalf of his client, or was we serving the client? So.
So when we sent another email saying we, we have seen, seen some improvement, we hope this continues and we will be, you know, something like that. Do we do that to follow up with that improvement?
Um.
I mean, we don't want to shut off the improvement, we're thanking for making an effort.
Um. Not necessarily, um, but on that same topic, we have not been sending letters after they're in compliance. Thank you for your attention to this matter, uh, we have not been doing that and we need to.
Yeah, we do.
We, there's, we have a he said, she said thing right now where they thought they were in compliance and we just sent them a court notice that they weren't. I'm talking to the county attorney's office right now, we'll probably be dismissing that and starting over. Uh, just. You know, just to err on if there was an error.
We need to have follow-up with them too, so we're on the same page, shake communication back and forth to say, you know, so they know, we know.
Right, so I know we, we haven't done that and I was talking to some of my counterparts from other counties and they're like, yeah, that's really, uh, something that should be happening and.
Well, that way they know.
Well, absolutely, instead of just the, the phone caller, but this way there's documentation on for both parties. So, but anyway, I think I've covered everything I wanted to cover and any questions for us?
Wind energy ordinance. Where are we at?
Uh. Kind of starting over. We had public meetings in October, November, December, January, February, March. First time we heard from any public was in April, uh, that came to the meeting and at that point, we didn't have, um, we weren't set up in our agenda for public, uh, public comment. We did have public comment for May. We didn't get a lot of work done at that meeting, so we got like a third now, maybe a fourth of the way through our work list that we were gonna do. Uh, we will have another meeting in, uh, June for the wind ordinance. It's gonna be a work session, public's invited, however, there won't be any public comment, we, we're still going off that public comment. Uh, I have done a lot of research on the different concerns, um, just reading stuff from University of Iowa, Iowa State. Uh, I know one of the biggest comments that we got and my, you know, I was I gotta be careful, because I'm gonna get beat up for, for speaking, I mean, I just want good information. It's not that I'm pro or against or, or anything, just, um, I believe in good information.
And the thing is, that's your position is to give information and not have an opinion.
Right. Right, so.
That's a tough situation, but it's.
Um, and you know my background, like, I come from that real estate background, different area of it though, but um, being an appraiser for twenty some years, you hear a lot of people say, this is gonna hurt my property value. Show me the data. I need to see the data. Um, so I did, I reached out to different county assessors and none of them, but, none of them had anything to show that this was affecting market value. So I went ahead and did my own sales study, I used O'Brien and Franklin Counties. And the median sales ratio for anything within, uh, within a half mile to a mile. And I didn't find anything within a quarter mile, any turbines within a quarter mile of a property that, uh, there was any sales rate, sales data on, but those median sales ratios were right where the other ones were. I'd reached out to those assessors and asked them if they were adding any functional obsolescence to the land or to the structures for proximity to wind turbines, none of them, they were valuing them all the the same criteria that they would any other property in their county.
I'm not so much concerned with property values, I do get people say that, that all, I'm just more concerned of, um, when that company talked about Commodore County, and this is kind of like the evolution of my thought. Um, they talked about, well, the reason they're looking is because of migrating birds and different things and they needed to expand their search area. Which I'm pretty sure we have more of that than Clinton County. But then coming home a couple of times in the dark from Western Iowa, you get that hypnotic red flashing, annoying. And it isn't like it's too bright, it's just a line across the horizon that stretched from the southern border of Iowa to the northern border of Iowa, all just one single line, thousands of them, all flashing at the exact same time. Which scientifically, my brain is quite impressive that they can synchronize them, because that's thousands of windmills. But that's in the flat and it's just, I don't know, I don't, I don't want.
That's why we've written that into our ordinance, that they will, whenever allowed by FAA, use ADLS, which is of advanced lighting detection system, that the lights, it actually, and I was talking to somebody else, it actually curtails the flashing a minimum of ninety percent of the time. So ninety percent of the time, those lights are not flashing, um, on, on, they, they only flash when they're using ADLS when there is a certain distance between, uh, um, an air, aircraft.
I guess I would be more in favor of making ordinance easier by saying I'm in favor of residential personally using windmills, but commercial? Thanks, but no thanks.
I know.
And my state mandates otherwise.
Yeah, well, and that's one of those too, when you just gave us an ordinance to, to follow, you had, you picked out a balanced ordinance. You didn't pick out one that was like so restricted that it was prohibited. And there's some out there and I'm trying to watch to see who, who has lawsuits against them and see how they're dealing with those, those ones that are truly prohibitive. Uh, you know, do we want to be one of those counties? That's for you guys to decide, but we, we took a balance.
Work in progress, there's a fine line there, huh, you know, I, I'm not, Mary owns three hundred acres and how can I go tell Mary, you can't put, you can't do that on your land.
Absolutely.
I won't let you, she says it's mine.
It's kind of the flip flop of the eminent domain in a way, by.
Two kinds, you know, by way. Yeah.
You know.
But, but we have written even that, that balance ordinance that was kind of the example that you guys asked the zoning commission to follow. We've written in some tougher things. Uh, the setbacks from property lines are tougher. ADLS was not part of Joan, or it's gonna be Delaware County's ordinance, it is part of ours. Um, there's also some.
But when I read them setbacks, you know, it's like, it's a minimal, minimal spot where they can put these, but then that also re, it, it, it's critically stops the point of, now I can't build here because I'm within the feet, so many feet of this turbine that's up now. So it's gonna stop your progression of where you can build and what you can't do.
Um.
I can't build within twelve hundred fifty feet of that windmill, well.
Well, if they, if they build after the fact, they can.
They can, because they know.
The turbine was already there, so if you.
But it still limits the future.
Of, of other turbines coming there.
And it limits the future of, you know, people, uh, construction and or building residents, you know.
Well, it depends where they want to go, in any, okay, but at the same time, you.
So the turbine can't go up within that distance, but if that turbine is there and somebody wants to build closer.
That's their choice.
That's their choice.
And, and right now, we have so many people that are buying these, they're eking out the smallest parcel of land that they can to build on and they're, I mean, they're right at their setback, so they're as close to their property lines that they can build because they're building, you know, they're buying such small lots.
Cause it's hard to find. Lots.
Yeah, well, and then I got some that it's like, oh, well, here's the land, but I only want to survey off two acres. It's like, wow, do you see that hill there? Be a center two and a half, you know, cause you got, well, you got a septic. You're, you got, what if you ever want to build another shed? You don't have room with.
With that.
Uh-huh.
Right.
So, but people are just eking out the smallest amount they can, even though they have other options to buy additional property, because they haven't surveyed yet.
I, I just can't see that with two acres, I mean, that's two football fields, so that still gives you firm enough room to roam here.
We have two acres and we, we have a dumb lot.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Well, and it.
I wasn't here.
It depends on where you set, where you set your house, where you want your shed, you know.
Yeah.
Where you want your shed to be in proximity to your house and then.
And then there's access for special exceptions later, because, you know, there was poor planning, but yeah, but.
You know, or when they built their house, they weren't planning on anything else and now they've sold it and somebody else bought it.
Right, right, oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole lot of.
Seen all that.
A lot of stuff, I guess I would recommend anybody out there to go online and they can look at what's out there so far.
Just far away, for the ordinance?
For the ordinance.
Oh, most definitely.
To see where.
They've been asking for input again, you know.
Where is that?
Right, and, and then too, it's great, but please read the ordinance first.
Right, I mean, that's what I'm saying. Okay, okay, let's just ask for it to snow like six feet on top of us today then, because that's what you're gonna get is, nobody's gonna read it.
You know, it's.
That's what we're doing, because some of the, some of the things I've been hearing were addressing in the ordinance.
Addressing them, you know, and.
How do we look at the ordinance, if we want to look at?
It's online, it's on the Jackson County Iowa website. And.
And what, and under zoning?
Yeah.
And that's kind of here lately, that's what I've been telling people to do.
Yeah, and you know, we, we spend a lot of time listening to.
This is the wind, uh, wind energy.
Yeah, wind energy, yeah, wind, wind energy conversion system ordinance. Uh, we spent a lot of time addressing things that were, like you said, already being addressed. It's like, we don't want this, 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 we don't want the flashing lights, it's like, we're addressing that, um, we, what about the decommissioning? We're addressing that, what about the damage to the road? We've talked to the engineer and again, um, ours is probably way more restrictive than a lot of them. We have a hundred and thirty percent bond instead of just a hundred percent bond to bring the roads back up to.
Standard.
To standards, so.
Well, again, we appreciate, and we should pass that one to your commission that, uh, we appreciate the work they put into this and the comprehensive plan.
They've been, they've been a great commission of work.
I do believe personally, our county, just by the topography of our county and all the migratory birds that we've encouraged and stuff, will make it a very hard place to develop commercially. But it's just, we need to get this in place or.
We, we do, and just so you know, that moratorium we put in place that expires of August, I have no doubt we're gonna be asking for a extension of that guy, so, uh, I don't see us being done and going through public hearings and everything by the end of August. Uh, this has been a lot more fluid, uh, and like I said, if we could have gotten some good input, any input in October, November, December, January, February, or March, that would have been ideal. We wouldn't be reinventing.
At any of your meetings, do you have any one on that speaks and or limit?
Um, we had.
Other than the company?
We had four people that were property owners in Jackson County at our last meeting. They uh, we did talk to them, they did talk to some of my commissioners afterwards, uh, they were afraid to speak in public. Because some of them had already been, um. Because some of them had already been um. Bullying. I'm I'm just trying to speak carefully here, but um I don't wanna use quite, quite, you use the word harassed. But there, these people are hearing, and people are trying to re-educate them. And give them good information because they don't know what they're doing.
You're talking about people are trying to re-educate the property owners or the other?
Re-educate the property owners that have signed easement agreements with these turbine companies.
You know, yeah, and.
And by not being very nice.
To me, some of that, it's like you gotta be. Know your facts and do your researches and do researches again on.
Well, and I've been.
Quality. Not, not other sites that are against or for or whatever, you know.
And I've been trying to be totally unbiased and. And try to get good information and not just. Yeah.
I mean.
I don't trust anybody.
I'm sitting here right now, not, you know, I went into this totally against it, I'm not totally for it, I don't know yet, and I.
Yeah.
I came out and said that.
Yeah, but we need, you know.
And has its pros and it has its cons.
We know we need something. We need something, uh you know, unlike some, like, we have border counties that all have, well, set to be counties. They're working on it, they're they're closer than we are, and they started after us, uh. But Jackson, or Clinton County has had an ordinance for a decade.
Right.
Uh but they're redoing theirs. They're looking at, yeah, they're looking at making some changes, yes, uh but they have an ordinance. I know uh people been saying, why can't Clinton County put a moratorium in place? Jackson County is, and like. Because they have an ordinance, we don't have one, that's why we have a moratorium, that you can't compare the the two. They have something in place. So, but but we're trying to.
Work in progress.
Getting there, yeah, so anyway, I'm gonna get off, oh, any questions, I was, I got off my wind soapbox here. You know, guys, so. I heard Tom from Clinton County say it, and I couldn't relate anymore than what he said, it was just perfect, he says. I am the full-time zoning administrator, that is my full-time job. Wind energy conversion has become my second job. And it's true. I I can, I can relate totally to that statement. It's, it does, it's um. A a lot goes, a lot going into it. And. When I say me, I I say that for Ruth also.
I get it, I said, we appreciate it, don't get overwhelmed, we'll take it step by step, and it's work in progress.
We're working on it.
Have a good week.
Thanks.
A little short.
Try not to be short with people.
Okay, so we are. Do we know about John Hanson?
I don't believe he was gonna be here, but.
Okay, so is there any boards or commissions that anyone would like to report on? I did have my first, we'll go ahead, anybody else?
The RPA was really short to the point. I mean, like a fifteen minute meeting, just tidying up or doing some stuff, so.
Early childhood, they're kind of working on getting next year's budget stuff all. All around, that has to be in by. June first to whoever they have to submit it to for the state. They had gotten cut in some fundings, and then other people came back in this year and said that they weren't gonna get all their funding spent, so. That's been quite a. Quite a deal, right now, we're trying to figure out. Um we gave some areas extra funding to buy car seats, cause that's been the big area of concern that people were stressing to us. And then the one agency that we gave funding to said they can't buy that amount of car seats. So now we're looking to see if there's other ways that they can do that, to get it done before the end of the year. So. That's a big thing on that, conservation, I added a ton that way. Um just kind of his normal reporting went out.
Did he have any kind of report on the harbor wall?
That was, I need to get over there and take a look, that was my question.
I think he stopped um. Rick from doing too much dirt work, cause it was too wet.
And then they had to get the dozer tracks out of it, obviously. But um yeah, otherwise that's done. And I don't.
I don't remember the numbers.
Remember anything big that else that he had. Going on, so just our normal, they're. Real close to getting their funding for the new project out at interpretive center, I think they have a couple more local fundraisers to do and.
They haven't already donated.
Yeah, it's.
There's still a chance.
I was really impressed with how quickly they were able to raise some funds.
I did have, I guess I'm on the hate camp board now. So I didn't have a first meeting for that, she had come and uh give me an orientation last Thursday. Um and give me some uh material to look over and to get familiar with, so. Uh just getting into, I did have a first one last thir- or last week, and again, I attended remotely because it was the the meetings are in Iowa. And I had pretty committed to a preschool graduation, so. Well, it's hard to get out of that one, but I was just saying, so but otherwise, no, but um. I mean, there was a good attendance at that meeting, so there was a lot of individuals, including local individuals that are involved in it, so. Hope for some good things and. Move forward. I don't really have anything else, I'd just like to say that I hope everyone had a. Happy holiday, Memorial Day, and I'd like to make it a memorial weekend. Remember and honor all those that passed before us, and especially our residents.
And with that, just seeing what I saw on Facebook yesterday. Use your brain, use your head, if you're gonna think about getting out on the river, the water levels look high. The fire departments are not there to yell you out, if it's looks high, it looks dangerous, if it's four feet higher than it normally is. Maybe it's not the best time to go out on the water, especially when the rental agencies are closed. And because of the water level, so. Just a little warning out there.
Anything else before the board?
I have a possibility that we need to change Todd's hearing date. On the, on the uh Level C wrote, he's checking on something right now from anybody, if it's a ten and twenty. We don't have time to get it published.
What makes it, what's, who determines whether it's a four and twenty or ten and twenty?
I have code, but it's, it's not, it's a default is four and twenty. There are certain things that are ten and twenty, but it depends, and I don't know the details, Todd is checking it right now.
So do we need to hold off?
To adjourn, you mean?
For a few minutes until.
We'll take a recess at this time. We will reconvene our meeting at this time, and we've been confirmed that we're in our legal aspirations, so. Anything else before the board?
No, motion adjourned.
A second thought.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, and again, we wish everybody a happy Memorial Day and and hope you have a good week. All in favor, say aye. I oppose, motion carried.